Okay, the time is 5:35 Wednesday, July 2nd. We're here for our bi-monthly select board meeting. I'd like to open the meeting with a roll call. Select persons present. Jeff Peters, Josh Tracy, Mike Gould. Employees present. Brian Mullis, Michelle Nichols, Kelsey Shannon. At this point, I'd like to move right to the first line item, which is an executive session. This session is a consult with legal, and this will be under Section 1 MRSA subsection 405-6E. It is 5:36, and we're going into executive session.
Jeff, technically you have to move the vote.
That's correct. Let's have a motion.
Make a motion when we go in. Executive session.
Second vote. We are now...
I don't know what's technical on it.
Yep, it needs to be right. That's right. Okay, we're officially in the executive session. Okay, the time is 5:58. It is July 2nd. We are... We've completed the executive session. I'd like to make a motion that we exit executive session.
Second.
We vote. We've exited executive session, and this session was to discuss options for appraisal for South Sangerville. At this point, I'd like to pause the recording and invite the public in to resume the meeting. Make a motion that we...
I don't think you've... You've already come out of the executive session.
The time is 6:01, July 2nd. We are resuming our bi-monthly select board meeting following an executive session where the board discussed options for appraisal in the South Sangerville lot. I'd like to open the meeting with a roll call. Select persons present. Jeff Peters, Josh Tracy, Mike Gould. Employees present. Brian Mullis, Michelle Nichols, Kelsey Shannon, Matt Blockler. I'd like to just go around the room. We'll start with you, Nikki. Just announce yourself.
I'm Nikki Fordham, the board chair.
Kelly.
Kelly Doyle, resident, Sangerville.
Coby Hall.
Cynthia Hall.
Tom Warren. Bruce McNaughton.
Okay. We'll start our meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Please remove your hat.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So our first item is open session. We usually open the floor. Two minutes per chair. If anybody has any items for open session they want to discuss.
Are you going to discuss anything about the executive session? Or are you able to?
I guess to keep it short and sweet, we just met with an attorney briefly just to discuss options on appraisal. That's it. That's what it is. That's what it was. And that's just straightforward. I think that's pretty much what there is to discuss at this point. We're just looking... We just had to look at our options. Where to go, that's all. Do you guys...
Well, I think where they've been... Where Tom and Bruce have been involved a little bit, I think we could probably say without divulging anything too strategic here that we'll probably be calling on your expertise for some information on the general assessment for lack of any charged words for the property. So... But because our attorney received a fairly aggressive letter from his attorney, we kind of felt that we needed to take a little bit different... A little more cautious track, I guess is probably... Does that sound fair, Jeff?
We just wanted to really examine our options with her before moving on because of that.
Not surprising.
Does that answer your question?
As much as I expected it would.
Yeah, as best as we can.
Right, yeah, yeah. Look, from my perspective, I'd be glad to help whenever we need to be around it. Whatever keeps it moving along, that's the hope at this point.
Right.
So you move it.
Okay, is there any other open session conversation? Cynthia?
I didn't come up with anything in mind but one of the city outside of me. I began to wonder what's happening with the old school site back here.
So we've been informed just by word of mouth, not officially informed, but Cam Kimball, that owned the insurance agency in town, has purchased it from Brian Howard. Is our understanding. And that's a conversation I had with Cam, and he shared that with me. So I believe it to be true.
Purchased for what?
The real estate.
Is it... Does that encompass the whole, like, grassy area and the swing sets?
The previous school.
Yeah, there's three lots there, actually.
And he owns all three?
Yes. That's my... That's our understanding.
That's our understanding.
We need to look into a couple of things on that because there was a covenant on the deed that was transferred to Mr. Howard. And so there's some questions that still need to be answered, but we also want to make sure we don't step on Mr. Kimball's rights in the process that we take everybody... We treat everybody fairly and appropriately in this situation.
And at the same time, look out for the best interest of the townspeople.
Yeah.
And it's my interpretation that he intends to develop it from my conversation with him into taxable property, which in theory is in the people's best interest. You know, put it on the tax map is... But we've also got to look out for the people's rights as far as that property goes, too. If it's outside of covenants, we at least need to look into that and address it.
Like, what did he develop? Is that what you mean? Like, what did he do with it?
When that property was sold to Mr. Howard, there were covenants in that deed. We just need to make sure that we're representing the people's best interest in that whole process. So we've taken it as a whole group, including Brian, as basically a homework project to figure out what those things look like. And we may end up even having to bring it to the people before it's over. We don't know. I certainly wouldn't want to discourage somebody that wants to develop and bring business to town either. So it's one of those tiptoe lightly things, you know, do it in a professional way. Is that how you see it, Brian?
Yeah, this is a man that's owned a business in town for many, many years. He's been a valuable member of this community. And I think his intentions as a businessman are good and have the interests of the people of Sangerville in mind. So, you know, I think we need to work with him however we can, but at the same time, we are committed to follow the law and do all of our research and make sure we understand everything. And as Jeff said, this may ultimately come back to a decision that the people make.
That is how the whole thing unfolded. And I, in my conversation with Cam, he was unaware there was even any problem there. He just purchased a piece of land and, you know, did it by the law from what he could see. So we're in the process of just figuring out what the best thing is to do with that. Is there any other open session comment? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move to item four, which is signing the minutes of the board meeting for 6:18 of 25. Okay, moving on. Item five is review of the treasurer's warrants. The first batch is payroll 45, 46, and fire department is 47. Okay, next item is accounts payable 48 and 49.
Now, there's two of them because when I went to print checks, it didn't print right. So then it printed some upside down. So I had to void some. Your first stack there is printout correct, and then the second stack is what I had to void and redo. So what you're signing and...
So this... So number 49 is the corrected version?
That... No, that is the other...
The second one.
Right, that's the second batch of what's... I subtracted out of that first one, the amount, and then that second. So they go together, really.
The printer gremlins were really harassing Kelsey this week.
It was there until 7:45 last night because I was getting mad. But it got done.
I was just happy to come in this morning and not see the printer in the middle of Route 23.
So just a quick explanation. The... Can you just come up and explain this? This... So this was the total. What's the correction right here?
That amount, which was what the difference was. And then I added in another... I got another bill after. So I subtracted the 15, whatever, to make that amount. And then this...
I was thinking this and this should jive, but there was another...
Yeah, I had it. We had another check come in.
Okay.
So...
That makes sense.
Okay.
Okay, so moving on. Item six, old business. First item is surveying the old dump site cost.
Wait, you want to address that, Josh?
Yeah, Brian and I talked about it, and we thought that we probably should just share with you guys what the estimate came back at, right? We never went over it last time.
No, no. And we had that passed at the town meeting, and they appropriated to do that. The people approved it. So I think we need to move forward with that.
That's what then what we approved budget-wise.
I honestly don't remember Jeff right off the top of my head.
I didn't put a dollar amount on that.
I don't think we put a dollar amount on that.
We just agreed to move forward and correct the problem.
Right, because we didn't have a dollar amount to put with it.
It's right there. It's $3,800 to do both pieces of property to make it one for the dump. Let's complete. Let's complete. Before we pulled the trigger, we figured two should be involved.
Okay, and where would that come out of for budget?
I can't remember right now. I know we had something for it.
I'm in the same place, Josh, because I don't really remember.
Well, I know the town approved it at the town meeting, but I can't remember.
I'm in the same way.
So Sangerville has a dump, and you're going to do that?
So years ago, we used to have our own dump. That dump was on somebody else's property, and they let us just use the property. At this point, they're paying tax on property that's how we're done. And they don't want to pay tax on it anymore. They want to turn the property over to us. And we feel it's our responsibility to take that property because it has our trash on it.
Absolutely.
And this is where we're at. But to do that, there's a survey involved to lay that property out so that we don't have line disputes in the future and such things like that. But the other side of it is it is the town of Sangerville's trash on that lot that somebody else has paid tax on.
Paid for years.
And has paid on for years and is willing to just turn the property over to us to make it all go away. And it's... We feel it's our responsibility to take care of our own trash.
Absolutely.
And that's where we're at. It's just crossing the t's and dotting the i's.
If we have to wait till next time, that's fine. That's my thought for not getting on top of it.
I should have... Well, I was... I should have asked.
We can... Of course, we've got a meeting, a special meeting on the night. We can sneak this into the gentleman's night.
Just simply where it's coming from, where the money's coming from.
We should have had that information. I should have had that information.
I didn't want to make a motion on it and then not have the money to do it after we did it.
Well, we kind of need to get taxes before we spend a whole lot of extra money anyways.
Quite aware.
So, yeah, I think we can table that and pull the roof up here. Probably without...
Do we want... Do we want to just announce the cost of it when we approve it? Or do we want to discuss that now?
I said it out loud, but it was $3,800 was the quote to survey the dump lot.
So we don't really motion on it, I guess. Okay. Next old business item is Sixth Mill Street.
Sixth Mill Street. We're well past our 30 days on the condemned word now. Now, that does not mean we have to do something. That means we are now able to do something.
Correct.
One of the neighbors... Adjacent neighbors was into the office and talked for a while the other day. And he said, "Really, there's no smell or anything like that. It's not really..." It sounded like it smelled like gas the last couple of days. But his concern is, you know, there are openings in the building and, you know, rodents, small animals and stuff are going to get in and worsen the problem. I think he's got a legitimate issue. But one of the things I have done in the meantime is I have contacted several different contractors looking to create a range of options for us from, you know, Bouchard's is one of them I contacted. They're going to give us an estimate on cleaning it up. There's another company that does cleanup and/or demolition. There's another one that does straight demolition so that I can come back here when I get those figures and provide you with what we expect costs to be for the different options. At that point, we can make a decision as to, A, continue to kind of sit on the property, or B, take action on the property. And my guess is probably... You know, it will depend on what action... You know, it will depend on the numbers that come back. You know, we might say, "Well, have Bouchard's come in and clean it and then put that on as a tax lien." Might be the thing to do. Or, you know, put it out to bid for demolition. So at this point, until we get some numbers back. And the other thing, I spoke with Catherine Ladd, Stephanie's guardian. They have a guardianship hearing the 23rd of this month. And she really asked us if we could not take any action until after the 23rd. And I said, "That's fine because there's no way we can be ready to take any action before then." So basically, I'm waiting to get numbers back from these people when I do share those numbers with you and we can have a more involved discussion about it.
We're good? Okay, let's move on. Next item, new business. First one is Nikki Fordia, chairperson of SAD4 School Board. Nikki's been asked by the town manager to come speak with the board concerning the budgeting for the school board. Nikki, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So what I've done in the other week...
Okay.
We've been treating all day. So I didn't know I was going to have all these people, but I have handouts for you guys. So basically, I'm going to do like a little mini-budget, how a school budget works type deal. So what were these three papers? Obviously, if anybody in the public has questions, I'll try to answer them, best, Ken or Danny Will. This is Danny. Danny is on the school working Sangerville. She is your resident, your representative on district on our budget meeting. You do have a district budget meeting coming up where it's going to open at 6:00 to give an hour worth for questions. If you guys have other questions, you can let me know and I can give them an answer. So the first paper that I gave you is the paper from the state that we get. And it's called the ED271. This basically shows all the funding that the state considers essential. And if you look in that first section under, it has... So Section A is attending counts. And you can see that they use October of '23 and October of '24. So they're using numbers from two years ago to figure out how much money any district is going to get. All of these are able to be found on the main Department of Education website. The other thing that can be found on there is Title 20A, which explains everything you ever would want to know about how to run a school, how to deal with teachers, how to do funding, how to... All kinds of things. I was hoping the internet was going to bring it up. I was going to bring it up so you could see just how many... There's like 10 sections. And there's all kinds of different chapters in each title, so.
Is there an address to get there, Nikki?
What I did was I just typed in Title 20A Education. Title 20A main, and the link comes right up to the main DOE. So the next section is B, staff positions. So this... They actually delineate how many positions of each section they think is enough. And you'll also notice on there there's certain jobs that are not listed. Custodians is one of them. Food service is another. All the things that are required... You really can't have a school without a custodian. Next talks about compensation of benefits. So we have costs that are fixed that we have full control over. Insurance is one of them. We usually find out March or April.
Second week in April.
What our insurance costs are going to be for the upcoming year. So we try to... We put in a place marker in the budget of how much we hope it's going to be. If it's less than that, then we have a little cushion. Our initial figures this year were 17% for insurance. We only had budgeted 10. And that was not the final number that we did get when we were in April. But we start our budget process in like December, January because we don't want to wait till April knowing that we have our district budget meeting in May. You know, we try to be very... We try to be on top of things. The next is other support per pupil costs. And again, a lot of this is... It's system administration. It's substitute teachers. It supplies and equipment. And these are all numbers that they use in their formula to figure out how much money they're going to give us in the end. So then, the very two bottom pages are divided by attending pupils and then calculated rates per pupil. If you go to the next page, it says operating cost allocations. Again, October of '23, October of '24. So again, they're using old information. And then they figure per the counts how much money. So basically, what they determine is... So the isolated small school adjustment at the bottom, the bottom total is for operating allocation funds is $4 million is what they figure we need.
Nikki, we can say, "Hey, is that state?"
This is what the state figures out. And of course, none of this... None of this includes any state unfunded mandate that they like to pass when they're sitting in the legislature. "Oh, you should do this. Oh, you should do this. Oh, we're going to pay for it." We're not going to do any of that. You have to figure out where it's going to come from. And then unfortunately, that rolls down to taxpayers. And believe me, we get it because everybody on the board is taxpayer somewhere. I mean, we have schools like Greenville. They get no money from the state because of their proper tax valuation. The valuation's by the state. So they get zero money from the state at all. So they would be what's called a minimum receiver.
Mike told me they're at $29,500 per student. Does that sound right?
Yeah.
$29,500. To put a child from September to May...
Their tuition at the state level was 14 and change.
You're talking Greenville or S.A.?
That's Greenville. And I was the town manager. Greenville told me that.
Yeah.
That that's one of the... I mean, they get a huge valuation up there because of the lake.
Right.
But on the other hand, they got some big expenses.
Yes.
So I hate to interrupt. For them, it was like cost...
No, that's what the state figures it should cost. That's what...
To run the elementary school?
No, we are K-12.
K through 12.
Yes.
Okay.
So again, that's what the state figures. So Page 3 has other allocations. And then it has some other subsidizable costs that are on here. Gifted and talented, some special ed. Most of our special ed comes... We do get special ed funding from the federal level. You'll notice on line 3, high-cost out-of-district allocation. So how that works is... How it used to work is they used to fund it upfront. Not all districts have special ed students that need to go out of district. We have two. So because our district is just not set up for the services that these two children need.
Can you have no say about whether those students are educated here or have to go somewhere else?
That's correct. Because public education is responsible from kindergarten to age 22. And they're trying to. They did not pass. They want to get three-year-olds into schools. So they want to go from age 3 to age 22. They've managed to keep the three- to five-year-olds out for now.
But right now, they mandated that we do have to take special needs age 3 because we receive the absence no more.
Right.
They need occupational therapy. They need speech therapy. They need dysprah therapy, that. So they're opening it now to the three-year-olds. So by the time they get to K-4K...
They may be able to be more mainstream.
Correct.
And we're working with Dover. And at their office on 572, that's where this three- to five-year-old special ed program is. So we're working with them... So, we're working with them to try to, and we are one of the first ones to sign up to do that, to help. They, they like it if you volunteer. If you volunteer, they might give you some money for the first year.
Right.
So.
So my understanding is correct, that, um, this, these few students in this three-to-five age bracket, by investing money here, it's a higher likelihood that they'll go mainstream school without any special ed through the all twelve years?
Right.
So, in reality, that's probably a good investment?
It is a good investment, yes it is. But it, it's not a one-size-fits-all, it might work for a quarter of the kids. But there are gonna be some kids that just, the needs that they need are too great. And then, they're not gonna be able to, they'll be in special ed forever.
And there's a difference between special needs in children that need like a, was it a five-year-old?
Five-year-old.
Five-year-old.
They might just need an accommodation.
Yeah, they just might need an accommodation and learning, whether they have like a dyslexia or something like that, they still get therapy, but they just have to be at a different level of learning. So they don't get hit as far as they're broke where they're supposed to be at.
So I will say, we have zero debt. We had a roof, um, that we were paying for, that has been paid off. So the next section on that third page, um, shows any debt service allocations, so, adding up so far, the first three pages are up to six million and change. Now, this is, this next page is the page that has a massive amount of confusion.
Correct.
This is the page, if you all recall, this fine booklet, where we go over the war. And let me find it.
Page seventeen?
Page eighteen. Article fourteen. This is one of the ones that it has, we have to stop, and we actually have to raise our cards, and you have to be counted, and it's a recorded vote. So, this chart here is money that the state, this page four is right on this, is here. So this is the money, this is how the state breaks it down. So the state has, that Sanderville is one point eight seven two million of the six million. But that's, but this money does not include any subsidies or any revenue that comes in. Because, like, basically, none of this, we, we have to raise it, and then we still have to get the money to be able to spend it. So. And then B, basically, same thing, state, uh, state valuation by member municipality. And so, and then it lists the municipalities, and then it has the number. And if I am looking at that correctly, that is, yes. So that next, um, that state valuation by member municipality, that is the local additional, so there's a local required and a local additional. That is the total of the money that the town is required to pay, not the one point eight million. So, what we're looking for from the town is a hundred and eleven thousand.
Additional.
Right. So that's also on there, that is gonna be, that gets put in this column, over here. So all the mon, all the money, all the things on here, we try to put those figures in, in the warrant, so that it's, it's clear as much. That's all I can say about that. And then it has, so that's the state valuation, then also the next section is the required local contribution. And then if you flip to the last, no, that's not the last page. Next to the last page, has the total allocation, local contribution and state contribution prior to adjustments, so that has the total allocation, what the state thinks. They've determined that, in all, adding it up to that point, what they think is required for the, only the essential parts. Now again, remember, there's a lot of stuff missing from what they say a school needs. And then any local contribution for a total amount of money, and then they minus it out. And then other, other adjustments to state contribution only, and then adjusted state contribution is next. And then they have adjusted local contribution by town at the bottom. And then the last page is basically a breakdown of how much the EPS subsidy is, and then how much departmental.
Thank you.
Essential services, that's what the state calls it. So again, all of these, you can find these online, you can find these online for any school district. They did wanna point out, of course, the state is supposed to, they say, that they're gonna pay fifty-five percent. And we don't. So if you go to, index of, yeah. No, next, the next to the last page, where that pink line is at the top. If you look at the adjusted state contribution, so it's this page here. Looking right now at the bottom under that green, you can actually see the state share for us is fifty-two point two five. That means that the state is gonna fund fifty-two point two five percent of our school budget.
Okay.
And that means the towns have to come up with the other forty-seven. But there is in law that says that they will pay fifty-five percent, but they don't for all districts. Now you'll, if you get bored and you wanna do some investigation, you can see that there's a district not too far, thirteen miles that way, that gets usually about seventy percent-ish, or have had seventy percent of their budget funded by the state.
Why is that?
County valuation as well?
One of the, it's valuation because they have Ripley, Exeter, so their towns don't have, so their tax bases.
Right, right around the back streets of Dexter.
So.
Financially, yeah, how financial the state over towns are, what their mail rate is.
Their about, their evaluation is, uh, has plummeted in Dexter.
And ours is increased.
So, the next, and then we're gonna look at this one next.
So that's a compensation.
Pretty much. And it, I mean, in the next, however, I mean, you have some districts that get well over fifty percent, like, so we're close, we're not ungrateful.
This is one of the issues that the state has with where they're pushing every community to be a hundred percent on their valuation. Is because they base so much
On evaluation.
Evaluation, so that's why, I know Sandville is, prior to me coming here, but Sandville had that reevaluation. But you kinda have to have that evaluation, because you gotta keep that evaluation above ninety-five percent now, or, or the state is gonna penalize you. And Josh, uh, from, uh, Hamlet, Josh Moore, and told me, when I met with him earlier this year, that we're pretty much about as high as we can be, we're right around a hundred percent. Or, let's consider a hundred point something of. So, we're in, in better shape in some ways because of that reevaluation.
Okay, so this next one basically is, it's not a line-by-line entire breakdown, but it is each cost center. And it's, parts of it are clumped together. So you can see, the first column is the twenty-four, twenty-five budget amount. The second column is the twenty-five, twenty-six proposed budget amount, and then any dollar increase or decrease. It's gonna be off to the side. The majority of any increase is wages and insurance. There, I mean, and I have, if you have a line specifically that you would like to know, I have the line-by-line budget, so I can look up and tell you what it is. Um, under a cost, that might take me a second to find it, but, one of the things that we also do, when we do our proposed budget, is we ask for things that we would like to get. So, I know there was a question about, well, how did they decide so quick, like literally the day after it got voted down, how can they put back out? We know that we have positions that we potentially are gonna say we're not gonna look for. That's the savings that we are gonna be able to utilize, which we did this year. So one of the cuts, you can see the bottom of that, that first regular, um, education instruction is the L for L alternative program, that entire program is cut. That includes a teacher who, we were able, due to what she has for certifications, we were able to transfer her to the elementary school. Because she is able to do, to go between buildings, so that's a bonus for us.
What exactly is the L for L?
So, L for L is an alternate, alternative program, so obviously, way back when some of us all, I mean, we're all, some of us are older than others, not trying to, not trying to make any side comments about how old anybody is, but if we remember, when I was in high school, you had four class, you had four groups, you had your college prep kids, you had your general kids, you had your business kids, and vocational kids. They don't do that anymore. They probably should. So you have a lot of kids, we have about fourteen that are gonna be somewhat impacted in one way or another by the loss of this program. I'm, I'm not saying it's a bad thing. Because that program does, it has kind of evolved into a thing that it shouldn't be, it should be more like a credit recovery. Or, if a kid needs help, some extra help in say math. They should be able to go to here, get some extra help for math, but should be able to be mainstream in the rest of their classes.
So it's special ed, it's not?
Right. I mean, I, I, when it comes to honest, we do have some kids in there who choose to have behaviors that just don't want them being in regular class, and so they get dumped in this L for L. And then it's.
Is that all ages, or is that just?
Just nine to twelve.
Nine to twelve.
So only at the high school. So we have kids that might go four hours a day, some of them have jobs. That's great, you know, I mean, they're trying to be productive members of something, that's awesome. But, that shouldn't, their education shouldn't be impacted because they wanna have a job. So I, I do know that there's been some changes wanted in that program, but, so we were able to, again, we were able to cut that program at least this year quickly and say, okay, so there's a savings, we were able to move the teacher because there was an open spot at the elementary school that was not filled. Okay? So like I said, so, um, regulation instruction is, is up five percent from last year, again, wages and insurance. The special ed services cost center. We were able to, um, not need as many staff in the self-contained nine-to-twelve classroom. Seven-eight doesn't have a self-contained classroom. The seven-eight resource room, we were able to eliminate some things in that, so we have an increase in that cost center, only three thousand dollars, and again, a lot of that is wages and insurance. But that's only up sixteen point one six percent. Tri-county, on the next page, they stayed flat, so we have no increase there.
How many kids do you have in Tri- counties?
I don't, no, I, so I will say, I.
Ballpark's fine, Nikki.
I think it's one or fourteen?
Fourteen or fifteen, we, I believe all of our slots that we are allotted are full. And we have kids waiting to take other slots. I wish what they would do is if there was a school that didn't have all of their slots full, if those slots could be opened up on like a lottery basis or something like that for other kids that are wanting to go.
Have you folks talked about it, about doing that?
I don't know that they've talked, I'm not on that committee, so I don't, I don't know.
Kids that are wanting to go to school?
That wanna go to the vocational center. So the tech center meets every other day.
We, we have a really good vocational technical school.
And the way our school is set up is, it's set up, you can go every other day, so like you get all your English on one day, you get all your math on that, so then your next day, you could go to the vote center. It's, it's how they do the blocking. Next cost centers, Article four, other instruction. We're up three point two two percent there, and again, wages and insurance. The next cost center, we're down one point one one percent, and a lot of that is, we were able to, um, we cut the technology assistant. So we do have a tech director who's in charge of the iPads and the, you know, the server and all that stuff. We did have in the budget to get her an assistant this year. She got, got chopped. Um, we've been looking for one for a little bit, so it made it a little bit easier, so it's like we had one, we haven't had one for a little bit, so we just decided that. Sorry Jenny, you're here again, or still, um, so we were able to cut that. Improv, so improvement of instruction, um, so curriculum, a lot of the curriculum that we do, um, they're able to find, um, cheaper other places. So again, we, we put in an amount that we'd like to have, and if it doesn't, we were able to then fine-tune it. So, um, it's actually ten thousand dollars less than it was last year. Um, the next one is, um, cost center six. No, it is cost center six, it's a different article, you gotta remember what number you hit. And that's system administration, so that includes the board of directors, the office of the superintendent, the business office, and the affirmative action officer. So, those board of directors, our increase for that line is, for that part, is literally just the audit cost. We have to have, we are responsible for an audit every year. We get reported out on it usually, January, I think, is when we get our audit results back. They look over everything, I mean, basically.
The state requires you to have an affirmative action officer?
Yes.
As a full-time position?
It's not necessarily a full-time position, it's a stipend position, but yes, we have to have an affirmative action officer. Remember those unfunded mandates we talked about?
Oh yeah.
And part of the, this year, part of the budget increase on wages is the state did a mandate, mandatory increase of Ed techs.
And the rest of the support staff, so all our techs got a twenty-five percent raise right out of the gate. And the rest of the support staff got a fifteen percent raise right out of the gate.
And that raises narrated by the state?
That was correct. By, by law. They wanted fifty percent to start with. They wanted a hundred, basically, that their current would be, what, fifty percent more than what they already made. And we, thank God, it was only twenty-five, I mean, twenty-five is bad enough. But it makes it really hard for small districts to, I mean, we, we negotiate every three years. And so we try to be very cognizant of how things work. So we try to set our costs very fairly over that three-year contract, because we don't wanna keep opening it up every year. So, this year, you know, we have actually ratified our support staff contract, but we just did finish support staff contract. And that, when they ask for a lot more, and we're like, listen, we just got a twenty-five percent raise, like what he wants to do. Or fifteen percent raise, like we, we can. And then, I will have to say, the budget being voted down was extremely healthy, in the way we had it timed. And I was not, and I was not surprised that the budget got voted down, I, I get it, we, we've done this before. Sometimes it seems like it's, uh, in active fruition, it's like, I, I wish things could be done differently too, I wish the state would stop saying you have to do this, this, and this, but we're not gonna give you any for it. Unfortunately, we're not in that position. So, system administration was up thirteen point five nine percent. School, uh, cost center seven is, um, basically the offices of the principal. And even though seven and eight is in the high school, the way that the budget process is set up, it has to be broke out separately. And so you'll see everything case six, seven, eight, nine, twelve. Like even our utilities are broken out that way, um, for each building. So like each section gets a nominated amount, even though it's in the same building. Um, it, it makes the bookkeeper's job very complicated.
Is CMP impacting the budget?
Uh, yes.
Right, from cost from there?
Yep. I will say, I'm gonna get to that on the next one. Um, number's fine, so we're at four point seven percent in that cost center. Cost center eight, which is student transportation, um, that first-line transportation supervisor, that's not all just him, that includes all of the utilities. And that twenty-one thousand is straight up CMP cost. And some salaries and insurances, but the majority of that cost increase is from, from, um, lightbulb. And some salaries and insurances, but the majority of that cost increase is from, from lightroom.
Has the state offered any solar incentives? Three panels to lower your bill?
Um, so we're up five point two five percent in that cost center. The next cost center, cost center nine is facilities maintenance. So again, you can see it's broken down, pre-K to grade six, seven, eight, nine, twelve. Custodians, building maintenance, district maintenance, groundskeeper, safety of plant. And then the last line, which we all love to see, we were super glad we made our last roof payment, to see a big negative amount in there is a nice thing because that reflects right back. So we're only up point one five percent in that. But again, that, a lot of that is salaries and insurance and utilities. Debt services and other commitments, again, that is zero. And then, excuse me, contingency and food service coordinator, that's salaries and insurance. So the first budget that we put out was nine point seven five two four sixty-three. Our second budget that we put out is nine million five hundred thirty-one thousand three twenty forty-eight, per difference of two twenty-one, one forty-two, fifty-two. So we're only up three percent generally speaking. And then this last thing I did, I know that this was a specific question, but this talks about the budget validation. And if you would actually flip to the second page, under three budget validation referendum voting, number F. I know there's been some question about why we can't put the amount of the budget on the ballot. There you have it. The state says you're not going to do it.
If we put on the ballot that the school budget is nine point seven mil whatever for each individual town, you're responsible for that nine point seven. We don't want to be responsible for nine point seven.
We don't want you to be responsible for nine point seven.
That's the number one question I think we've gotten as a group. Again, when, when, when this whole thing went down, clear as mud is, is just being polite about it.
And that's, and that's why I, I actually called Brian and said, hey, I'm happy to come and answer questions because you don't know what you don't know. And I will say, I've been on the board over ten years. My paperwork all has notes on it because I got home today from treatment and I went through my budget. But I have my line-by-line budget to make, to mark the highlights. So that I could try to answer a solid question. Because it's hard when you don't have it in front of you, you don't know.
Right.
And so that's why we wanted to, we wanted to do that. And I, I've talked to Kelly and said, we need to do it more often and we need to do it for all selectmen. And that's why we love people to come to the district budget meeting because you can get your. Or school meetings. I mean, all our meetings are open to the public. The only thing that's not open to the public is executive session and we just will throw you out after that for those. But we encourage people to come and ask questions. We're actually, we're probably more laid back than we should be. If somebody has a question during public comment and it's, we'll, if we can answer it, we'll answer it. If it's obviously about staff, we can't talk about that just like anything else. But I, I don't want people to be uninformed. That's not what we want. And it's hard when you have forty people show up at the district budget meeting and you have a hundred and twenty people in Sangerville come vote and there may have been ten people from Sangerville at the meeting to get any questions answered. So that's why we wanted to come, that's why I'm giving you, I mean, Danny is more than happy to come if you have other questions. You know, reach out to us because we'd rather you ask the questions so we can answer them correctly.
Well, we're trying to hard to push people towards your district budget meeting too.
And then, and then the other question that was on the ballot is, and I get why people say no. Let me say that right off front. But that's another one, is do you want to have this meeting every three years? And they say, they don't, I mean, they don't want to get rid of it, but then nobody comes. But that's the place to come to get your questions answered about the budget or to reach out to a board member and ask your questions about the budget. Because it, it's hard to, we don't livestream. That is a very slippery slope, in my opinion. Because you don't know who you're gonna get. You may get somebody from another state that's gonna stumble and, and they have no idea what we're talking about. And their questions may have absolutely nothing to do with anything. So we don't livestream our meetings. But again, we're, we're very open to have people come. I'm trying to make sure that our calendar is up to date so that people can come and know when meetings are to come and get questions answered. I'd rather have six wide-open budget meetings for people to get their questions answered and feel comfortable what they're voting for than spend my entire summer, my entire summer's pretty short anyway, but, to spend my entire summer, I, I don't mind coming to, I'll go to any meeting I need to.
Just, I, I do know how busy Three Rivers Ambulance is. I got a lot of sleep there last summer.
Yeah, unfortunately, my Wednesdays are not spent at Three Rivers Ambulance. Right now, my Wednesdays are spent somewhere else.
The question, and you know what I'm gonna ask you because we've had conversations about this many times for many years. Where's the future? And we've got a shrinking school district.
Is it shrinking? That's my question.
It is. It is. It's, it's every, it is shrinking everywhere.
Everywhere.
So it's not, it's not just us. But again, when your funding is from two years ago or three years ago, it's, it's not keeping up with anything. Costs three years ago were way less than they are now.
Absolutely, I agree with that.
So when asked the money that they're, when this, the figure that they're starting with, this is the money we're gonna use, you're already minus. Before you even get started, you're already in a hole. So our board had made the decision to work with Dexter. One, one of the, the, one of the things I liked about Dexter is they have a lot of towns like we do. So you figure we're going from, we would go from a district that has six towns to possibly being working with a district that has six or seven towns. So the amount of towns is gonna increase, which means the amount per money is gonna lessen because it's spread out over more people. We have, we have submitted an application. The state board of ed keeps moving the goalposts because when they're not getting, I'm glad Stu's not here because I can talk freely. I have to watch it when the paper's here. There's too much to quote me on things that I say.
He's gonna be listening to the recording.
Okay, hi Stu. But I'll say, I'll say it anyway, but he's not here to look at me. But, um, the state keeps moving the goalposts because they're not getting the application that they want. So several years ago when LaPaige was governor, they passed a law that said three school districts could merge together, close their high schools, apply for a program and have a brand-new school built for them. We submitted an application to that, we were number three. Fort Kent was number one. A little bit lower in the same, in the Roosted County was number two. Both of those, I believe, were strictly political moves. Both of those collapsed. One of them was a fiery crash, fiery.
Did you believe?
Both seven forty-seven.
Oh yeah, me too. Fort Kent wasn't a fiery crash, but I think they were up against it right from the get-go. Because the way they looked at it, Fort Kent was the powerhouse. And they said, well, it needs to be in Fort Kent. And when you're looking at the vast area from Fort Kent to Madawaska, it's like you, you can't just say it's gonna go on one side or the other. You have to really be open. I have said right along, I graduated from Guilford, I live in Guilford. I know when I cut my vein open, I bleed red, but I, Terry, now I bleed blue and gold. The day that high school closes is gonna be a sad, sad day. But in the end, it's what's good for the kids. And I don't care where we build it, I care that we build it. I don't care where it is. I don't care if we have to bust them half an hour. I don't care if it's two by two, but we need to do that, but anyway.
We could make a good argument that Sangerville is the low central location, I think.
There's a couple spots in Sangerville I would think are totally perfect. There's one right on the, it's not Sangerville technically, but there's one right on the line on Route fifteen. It's a beautiful field there on the left. I think that would be a glorious spot for our school.
Route fifteen or Route?
Route fifteen. Right near the sign that says, welcome to Guilford.
You mean Sangerville?
No, no. There's, there's several spots in Sangerville I think would be good, but this one spot in particular, when you're driving down fifteen, where the Camp Bell store used to be, that little field right there, I think would be a gorgeous place for our school.
There's certain mandates.
I might be a little hateful. Listen, I might be a little hateful about that, but anyway. But there are certain, you have, your speed limit has to be just so, you have to have three-phase power. If you can be on town sort of one, then that's a bonus spot. Yeah.
But the other thing with Dexter too is they've taken the same standpoint as our school board. All our towns are shrinking, we need to do something, this is about the kids. You know, give the best education that, that us as taxpayers can do without restricting the kids, taking away sports, which so many people have mentioned regarding the budget. When that's, when, what some kids, all they want to do when it's.
If we have sports, we're gonna, we might as well just.
Yeah, right.
Because that's what keeps, I know it's very small in numbers, but that's what keeps the majority of the town. Dexter's also been very gracious in welcoming some of our kids to play on their teams and we have done the same.
Right.
So.
Send your kids over, they still have to try out. Hopefully they make it, we wish them the best of luck and they have an awesome sports program, teaching fundamentals and, oh, you wanna do this? The senior class, you, you know, what do you want to do when you graduate? How can we help you?
The other thing that we've talked about, so we, so we did submit that, we were number three and then the state dragged their feet because COVID hit. And so things ground to a halt. And then they, the state did offer up some money because there were gonna be some startup costs and we were in with Milo and with Corin. Corin never actually decided as a district whether they were gonna go in and off, Milo had. And then Milo went through kind of a restructuring.
Of town.
Meltdown, I guess. And they decided they were gonna withdraw, so that just left us in Dexter. So this past year, they did open the law back up to say two school districts can apply. So we have, we, basically, we resubmitted our application, we've tweaked it some. For the most part, we spent a lot of time working on this project with three schools. So we've just tweaked it a little bit for two. We've resubmitted it, but this, like I said, the state board of ed keeps moving the goalposts. It was supposed to be this summer, now it's December. And I really think that they're not getting the applications that they're hoping for. I think they really want to try to give it to a big city who isn't gonna need it because their tax base is so massive. They could get a new school bill easily without any, any pain to the taxpayers.
So I guess the next question is, what can we do with government that is kind of saying, go out.
I think the, I think the biggest thing is, is make sure that the information out of voting is correct. If people have questions and you don't feel comfortable answering, send it to any of your four board people. Send them to me, have them call the superintendent's office. Encourage them to come to the district budget meeting. Contact their legislatures, legislative people and senators to say, stop unfunded mandates. I do know that this year, I'm part of the main school boards association on the legislative committee, so we see all, a lot of the laws that go, bills that get proposed. A lot of them are unfunded mandates this year. I'm sorry. And a lot, and when it came down to moving them forward, the committee said, no, we're not doing that. We're done doing this unfunded mandate stuff, like people are hurting. The, the other thing that they need to do is they need to find another form of funding besides property taxes. That is something that they are working on, they did a study this past year, which did get wrapped up and that group did submit a report saying, you have to do something different. Property taxes are not the way to keep funding public education. But it's really hard when all of Title Twenty basically says the public is responsible for public education. So those are the hard parts because we get it, you know? But the other thing too is, yeah, we're a small district or we're getting smaller, but we still need people to work here. And so you have to pay them a competitive wage. One of the laws that they've been trying to pass and have been so far unsuccessful is a minimum teacher salary of fifty thousand.
It just went into effect last year that all the teachers had to be paid a minimum base of forty thousand. So we had structured our wages.
To meet them.
To meet that, so it wasn't like we were getting waylaid all at once. We just got that.
But we're not, we're not close to, even after three years, we're not gonna be to fifty.
Correct.
For, for that group of people.
Right.
I don't see how that can be legal. I mean, some people like want to come to a small town with no traffic.
But it's a state mandate.
It's a state mandate.
Through the Department of Education and we have to.
And the way a lot of that works is somebody in the legislature decides that they want to submit a bill saying, we want our teachers to make a minimum fifty thousand. Well, that might be great in Augusta and Portland.
Portland, exactly.
And places that have big tax bases, but it's not great here in Jackman.
Some people might want that though.
Little, little places that don't. Places that just have like a K-six, because a lot of places just have like, they don't do middle school. They only do elementary school and that's it. And then the middle school students and the high school students get tuition elsewhere. So I mean, there's, there's all kinds of different, towns have different things. Yes, we have K-twelve. If we do something different with Dexter, then we would be K-six or maybe K-eight, depending. And then our nine, twelve students would go to a test.
We test us in different ways, you know?
Yep.
As far as this school has this accommodations, this school has that. Shuffle kids, but have it not be a huge transportation impact, especially on level ones.
Yeah, we've talked about sharing at the high school, sharing the two spaces and kind of trying to do that to start, you know, as a, as a possible stepping off stone. For one, for people to see that we're serious about what we're doing.
And the other thing we've done too, as far as cost savings have gone, is like with Kelly, she helps with Greenville as far as their superintendent. She works X amount of time through them, so they pay.
Her insurance.
Pay, pay for her insurance, so us.
So we don't have to.
Right.
Which is helpful.
And the same with Nikki Green, who's the special ed director. She helps out with some of her services.
And so Greenville covers some of her costs as well.
Correct. So we're always looking at different ways as to how.
To share services if we can.
And, you know, one of the conversations at the district meeting was two hundred thousand dollars as far as a contingency fund, as far as facilities goes. Well, in case anybody heard about it, last year, we had a wall.
That was rotted.
That was rotted at the high school.
And had to be repaired.
And had to be repaired.
We did, I mean, we did the, our, our staff, and I'm saying we, we rotted it.
You don't want me to.
But, um, our, our staff did that, the majority of those repairs.
They, we did have some contractors in there looking at things, making sure things were being done correctly and all that. But without that being in there, that's beyond the normal facility's budget. So it comes out of the renovation account.
And another, another more item that's in that is we always ask, if we get more money, do you as the public want us to put it back? I mean, for us, it's not a question. If we get more money from the state, it is going to lessen the tax, it's going to lessen the tax burden to the town. It's not even a question for us. So we, we, like I said, we try to be great, obviously, but I know that's a lot in a short amount of time. And, but again, a lot of that stuff you guys can go see. I mean, the ED two seventy-nine back, I think, back to two thousand and six when the, when the ED two seventy-nine started. You can see every single one of them.
Nope, two thousand and thirteen.
Two thousand and thirteen is the most, is the furthest one back.
Two thousand and thirteen is the most.
But you can see all the ones for our district, you can see all ones for other districts.
And right now, we got the highest pupil population for the district, but I went back where.
I think we have, because I was asked that question, I didn't know.
We have, um, it's gonna change again. But right, as of right now, we were told it's one thirty-five from what I know right now.
That's it, one. What total?
A hundred and thirty-five.
Oh, total?
Total. Total kids?
Total kids.
Oh, let me go back.
L G in high school. We usually get those num, we usually get those numbers somewhere.
So total attending pupils through. Four seventy-nine, four seventy-nine.
I was close.
Four seventy-nine.
I said four fifty, I was close.
Four hundred and seventy-nine total pupils, but back.
But I don't know how many, I don't know what the breakdown is per town, but I am tasked for that information, if we can have that at the district meeting.
We need that.
Nikki, would you go on record and say?
Oh, here we go. Can I say enough going on record? I cannot, I can hardly wait till Stu.
Oh, this is easy. If you say that this budget is bare-bones.
Yes. I mean, we're asking for, we're asking for enough, we actually cut assistant coaches for all sports teams.
L for L?
We cut L for L. I mean, the tech job, I mean, she's gonna have her work cut out for her, but I mean, we're not asking, we're not getting a lot of extra for the kids. I mean, I will say that, um, we do have an entirely new front office staff at the high school this year. We have a new principal, a new assistant principal athletic director and a new secretary. So sometimes that affects the budget too because when you hire your teachers, it depends on their. So sometimes that affects the budget too, because when you hire your teachers, it depends on their amount of service. But we, we try to do a lot with what little we get.
If you, if somebody could step forward, a big day tomorrow, what would be great this year, your dream budget?
My, our dream budget? I will say, we did have a, an ex, well, he was an alumni who has passed away. He gave the, the end program at the high school a large chunk of money. So that's gonna be very helpful to them. You know what, if, if I could pick a dream budget, I would pick anywhere, you know, from like eleven to twelve million, which is not a lot. It's a little bit more than what this is, but that would just give some cushion for us to do some things with our kids that we haven't been able to do.
A year.
That's one year.
Four hundred and seventy-nine.
I didn't look to see how much Setos is, but I know that Setos is around thirteen something million for a K eight.
Have you been confronted, has the board been confronted with all the towns' rumoring that they make?
So yes, we have, and I will actually address that, I will tell you how that works. So there is a process, if you were to decide that you wanted to leave the district, there is a process to that. And there are things that you then would have to pay for, for yourself. That's not included separately. You would end up having to tuition all your kids at the cost of fourteen something thousand a year. You would have to pay all transportation costs. You would have to hire your own superintendent.
This is individual students.
This, no, this is like, so the whole town, okay.
Thank you.
Yes, so this is, so, I'm not gonna name it town. But, it's, well, or we'll use you guys just as example, cause I'm here talking about Sangio, so if Sangio decides, you know what? You guys are nuts, we're done looking at this money, we're gonna go out on our own. You would end up paying fourteen thousand, the state level of tuition per student. To, and they go wherever they want. Cause if you're gonna tuition kids, you can't say, well, you can go here or here. You say, well, where do you wanna go? Now you may have a kid that says, I wanna go to John Babs. Their tuition may be seventeen thousand. Write the check, cause they're going. Cause if you say no, they're gonna appeal to the commissioner and the commissioner's gonna say, you tuition kids? You can't tell them whether they can or can't go.
But doesn't the parent have to pick up the difference between whatever cost is sent into one of the normal?
Public education, type of public education. They may be required to pay part of it, but they're gonna be, that's not gonna be much.
But I think it's kind of unrealistic, Sangio, to even remote it to the senator.
No, I'm great, I said great, cause I'm just, I'm using that as an example, like I said, and then you would have to be responsible. The town would have to be responsible for all transportation costs. So you have to get your own buses, you'd have to supply your own bus drivers, you're gonna have to do your own maintenance, you're gonna have to find a place to park said bus. It may need two buses. You're gonna have to hire a superintendent. I can tell you now superintendent's not cheap.
So this is Milo ran into this when they bailed out of the AOS over there, went back to just the-
They kept theirs, they kept the superintendent, so Holland had to get their own superintendent.
But the state required them to each have a superintendent.
Yes, they each have to have a superintendent. Yep. Yep, because the AOS was, they were sharing a superintendent between Holland and Milo. And as soon as they disbanded that AOS, each town has to go back, each place, each district has to go back to having their own superintendent.
And with the, our, for Sangerville, with a hundred and thirty-five students-
Hundred and thirty-five. I knew she had another one.
Our tuition rate is eight thousand, three hundred, nineteen dollars and thirty cents.
Well, that's what it's, no, that's the cost per kid at the, at the budget as it's set.
As how it was set.
But that's not what it-
That's with the state subsidy.
Yes, that's what the state subsidy, but-
With the state subsidy.
That's with everybody, so if you were to pull up, you're gonna pay in the state tuition rate, which is fourteen.
Right.
So the eight, three, nineteen, thirty, that's as of the new budget, they're gonna vote on, on the fifty, right? So can you explain to me, why when you went out on the twenty-eighth, this is what we had for a warrant? And now we have this, are we gonna get this when we go to your meeting?
Yeah, you're gonna get a different one altogether, after the district budget meeting, you're gonna get, you'll get what needs to be.
Cause this one was the district budget?
Yes, I know.
Okay.
I might have was wrong, the one that came out that night was wrong.
And I'll apologize for you, for, to you for putting out numbers that weren't accurate, but I used your numbers.
But you used the numbers that don't include subsidy.
That's true, but nobody explained that.
Again, nobody asked.
That's what this is about, right here, this is about-
You don't know what you don't know, which is why I'm here.
Alright, I'm-
Well, it's, it's clear as mud.
It is clear as mud, it really, I mean, it really is, I mean, it's like a moving target, you might as well try to shoot at something, that's why I'm here. I mean, it's, it's crazy. It's crazy. I mean, I will say, this, this is not the first time I've been through this. I, people may find out that we did cut a program, we cut a couple people, people may be all up in arms, people may vote this budget down. And then we'll have to, but then you don't know what they want, do they want it higher than what it looks like?
And they are, uh, go higher.
The last time we had to do it, we, we had a budget, we cut it, we put out that budget, they voted that budget down. We put out the first budget we had, it passed. I mean, it's, it's, there's no, there's no running a reason.
How do homeschool kids, you have a lot of homeschool kids?
There are a lot of homeschool-
How does that affect, or does it even play into it?
It does, it does, it does not even play into this, but homeschool kids can come to school and participate in programming. Sound programming.
But you don't get any funding from, for that.
Now, this is something Greenville said that that first than the amount of homeschool kids up there.
Yes. Most of our homeschool kids that we have that come, they come to participate in sports. We may only have a handful that might come and take a class or two. I mean, we do, do some pre-college classes, um, so they would probably take the, they would probably take that stuff. I don't think they would come take any regular ed classes or anything like that. But yeah, it's not helpful, because again, now it's another kid that's-
Because we don't get the subsidy for those kids.
We get no money from that.
They're still paying their real estate taxes though.
They are still paying their real estate tax, so that's, and that's part of the reason why they come do it, but there's no state, from-
Right, but not drawing from system, either, anyway, they're-
Right, we're not, right, right. So like if we, like if we could count the homeschool kids, then our state subsidy would be more, because we have more kids on our cattle.
Right, but they're not drawing resource, they're paying in, their real estate, they don't draw money, they need to re, resources back out, so.
They're paying the, right, drawing, right. Right, so it's-
They're actually making money off the homeschool kids.
But we're not, but we're not, no, because they don't come, like I said, we don't, they don't come and, most of the kids come and do sports and that's it. And they don't-
And they have one or two.
It's not that type of issue, but-
Right, but all the school, homeschool kids' parents who have real estate, they're paying, they have full taxes, just like I do, like-
As far as I know, they do, I don't know. Listen, I don't know who pays, I know I pay my taxes. And I know who doesn't pay their taxes, because I look in the, in the, they won't look who made their taxes. Other questions? Do you guys, I should say, do you have any questions, cause I did come to talk to you guys.
Josh does.
What is Sangerville's exact amount on this new budget? After the state puts their money in, so that we can tell people, this is where we're at.
Hundred and twenty thousand?
No, we're way above one twenty.
No, that's the, like, the ending of this year.
One million, one hundred and thirty-four thousand, six eighty-seven, fifty-five.
How do you figure it?
Can you say that again?
I do a hundred and thirty-five students times eight thousand, three hundred and eighteen.
You can't, you can't count, you can't do it that way.
Why, it's only a hundred and twenty-one thousand?
Cause that's not how, cause that's not how it works.
Can you say that one, number one, one, one?
I certainly can. One million, one hundred and thirty-four thousand.
How do you justify that?
Six eighty-seven, fifty-five.
How do you justify that?
Gilchrist is a hundred and one point three two seven.
I don't care, I, I have a hundred and thirty-five students, I, I didn't-
But you can't, you can't divide away students, because it's not-
What?
It's not, but that's not how it works.
Part of it's based on evaluation.
It's based on evaluation. You can't say, we have a hundred and thirty-five kids, we're only gonna pay our portion of a hundred and thirty-five kids, that's not how it works. That's, that's what we've been talking about, it's the state sets-
And not one person in this room is in control of how it works.
Right.
We have our town evaluation, that's X amount, we have Gilchrist, that's X amount, Parkman's is X amount.
Right.
Everybody's has a different evaluation, that's figured into it. And then you figure the subsidies per town, whatever the state goes in basis, that's gonna be figured into it. There's a whole algorithm that does not make sense as to how they figure-
The logistics.
It does not make sense, they're-
But that's why it states within the school budget, it is figured by state and local assess, assessments and allocations.
So if, if we had, we valued the town, it would have been figured differently.
It would have been figured differently, because your town evaluation would have been, your town valuation would have been different.
However, the state makes us stay within a certain amount, so we had to re-due to get state money.
Yes. Yes.
Now, in that case, in that case, how does, does that affect the state aid to education as far as like our portion? If we hadn't?
I got an idea.
If we hadn't re-due?
Danny Bennett, Danny killed a lot of trees and I killed, cause I used to have a bad old hometown, killed trees and I did.
All I was killing trees, I didn't care too much. So, last year's local required from the state was six hundred and forty thousand dollars, five hundred, six hundred and forty thousand, five hundred and ninety-five, thirty-four cents. And then it brought up the-
Additional.
Additional. For a total of one million, sixty-two, nine hundred and seventy-one and twenty-two cents. Our evaluations for the town have gone up each year since two thousand and sixteen. Our mill rate has dropped since two thousand and sixteen. Prior to that, our mill rate was almost twenty point whatever percent, I've got it in all of this. And it's been going down.
But that's the purpose of a law, to require a hundred percent evaluation, that's supposed to be more fair to everyone.
Right. So except, so last year, you were at one million, sixty-two thousand. And this year, you're at one million, one hundred and thirty-four thousand. So it was less, I mean, significantly less before you had a new evaluation.
Well, it's only forty.
It's still, I mean, that's enough.
Right, but you got more subsidy, we got more subsidy, but we had less kids.
Now, the way it was explained to me, the longer we keep our evaluation up, then the state will eventually see that, jeez, they need the money and they're gonna give us a more percentage, so we really need to keep our evaluation up.
Yes. Right. Yes.
Yeah.
So yeah, it's a trap.
Cause they'll do an average three-year, two-year, or go to previous year based upon our town's evaluations.
And it's not just that, if you don't keep your evaluation up, they start hitting your home spending exemption. I mean, this, they've really, they've really put some teeth into that law, so you pretty much have to-
Do what they want.
Yeah, or have to keep that evaluation up, but, you know, again, you know, as long as you've got a good assessor's agent and a fair assessing process, I think it is fair to assess at a hundred percent evaluation.
So was our budget committee given the numbers for the school budget to go and base our budget off of, to get the mill rate, so they would know where we were at?
No, we did not have those, we had the, we had the, we knew what we were paying out each month based on last year, so we could figure an annual from that, but we didn't know what we had coming up this year. But our budget process was in January.
Right, and that's the rare part, is we started our budget in January, we may not get the, the money, the paperwork from the state till February or March.
But we still have a lot of money here, what towns are.
But you guys also have, but you also have, and you have your town meeting generally in March.
Correct.
Right.
So we may not have our budget finalized.
So, and that's the thing, we know what the county is gonna require from us. We know what we appropriated with town meeting, but before we can actually set the mill rate, we have to have our final budget.
Yeah, and it, and it is hard, because again, we, we sit there and wait. I mean, we, we've gone like three budget, we've gone into March, we're still waiting for ED two seventy-nine to come out. So we, we have a, it's hard, because we can't, I'm sure the town would like to have that information before their town meeting. We just don't, we don't get it.
Right. So what was our mill rate set at without knowing what the school budget was?
It wasn't, we haven't set a mill rate at all. That's what, before-
Oh, no, I was just, okay.
Before we commit taxes, we have to have a firm number.
Any other questions? I'm not trying to rush you, but you guys know how to get ahold of me. Because two of the three people, two of the people in the office have my direct line.
Yep. I have all your contact.
And my, my home phone is listed on the school website, I mean, if you call, I'm happy to answer any questions I can. I, I found it very helpful.
Yeah, this was helpful, Nikki, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I know Wednesday's our top day for you, we apologize for that.
So.
So thank you for coming.
With that, you stand on out of here. If you have any other questions, please don't hesitate, me, her, somebody, you know, people. You don't like the answer you get from that, so then call me and then I'll make sure you get the right answer. I do have, I don't have much flow as the board chair, but I got a little.
Thanks again.
Thank you, I'll call you later.
But thank you for your questions, I appreciate it, so I hope, I hope it helps.
Yes.
It does.
It does.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey. Does anyone have anything else on the school budget before we move on? Danielle, you keep looking at me, you have a question?
No, I just, I see you.
Okay.
I get Kelsey's head in my way with Josh, I can kinda see my, I can boom.
I just wanna make sure, I, I wanna make sure that while we're on topic, we discuss everything that everybody wants to discuss. My take from what we just discussed, anybody that wants to make a difference or wants to have a better understanding, the state mandates without funding, Stacy Gurr and Jim White, those are the people we need to talk to as citizens. Because what I'm understanding from Nikki and from you is those are the people imposing these things on us in reality. And one of the things, from some of the conversations I've had with Stacy and Jim and others, they are gonna look us right in the eye and say, you're absolutely right, we are fighting for you. The problem is other members of the legislature. Correct, but that's, that's a place people can go if they wanna have discussion that matters.
Even Department of Education, I mean, you can put in complaints to them as well, but are definitely our legislature, they're talking with them. But it's like Nikki said, somebody will get thinking, oh, well, I think thus, and they'll go and write a bill and they try to get it to go through and it's just huge deal. Just like anything, like politics goes, you know, but-
People sort of look at poor people.
Correct, but definitely as far as how our town's been being assessed, you can see the differences in the years with the kids. I mean, back over the last ten years, it's fluctuated by forty, well, right now it's forty-four. We're down forty-four students in the town of Sangerville since two thousand and fourteen. Overall, since two thousand and fourteen, the school is down right around three hundred.
And actually, the population of Sangerville has increased in that period of time.
Correct.
Not exponentially, but it has increased.
And that's one of the things the school board has discussed, we know the district has a, has a community that's heavily, they have a fixed income, you know, they have the budget for everything. And even when we're talking negotiations of budget, that's one of the things we look at, it's like, the person paying your paycheck right now, or the person contributing to this, they're only living off, say, twelve hundred dollars a month and maybe three hundred and fifty dollars in food stamps and they have to pay X, Y, and Z and they don't, they don't have it.
And most of those people don't have any children in the education system.
Correct. Correct.
They pay to put them through college. Um, can you give an example of a mandate, what you, like, give me an example, something that was mandated without funding?
At TAPs, the increase in their wages. One level got fifty, fifty percent, the other one got twenty-five percent. It's unfunded, you have to do it.
Those are statewide or do they go, they focus to another town?
Nope, states, that's statewide.
Statewide, regardless of the students.
Just everybody across the state, you get an ente, whether it's, ente one through three.
Who comes up with that?
And then same with teachers, they imposed that three years ago where base, you're straight out of the college student, has to make forty thousand dollars a year. And it had to be in, in effect by a certain date, that's why we planned ours all up.
Okay. From here, we'll move on. The next item, security for Veterans Park. This was a little disturbing for me when I had the conversation with Miranda. But we had a break-in, Pirate Rec had a break-in at one of the buildings at the rec field that we own, Memorial Park. And I didn't, I, I- And I didn't, I, I learned about it on Facebook. And shortly after I learned about it on Facebook, Michelle contacted me, she said, did anyone call you about this? And when I learned the reason, they said that, and I don't wanna point fingers at anybody or, or denigrate past administrations around here, but what I was told was, in the past, we were told that we keep our stuff in our buildings at, at our overage, that, you know, it's not, it's not the town's problem if those buildings get broken into. So I don't know if that was conveyed that way to the Pirate Rec people, but at least a couple of them perceived it that way. So that was why they, why I was told that they didn't bother to contact the town at all. Apparently, they've lost equipment seven or eight times over the last four, five, six years out of this one particular building.
Is it padlocked?
It was.
Apparently it was, but they basically kicked the, kicked the door in and break the padlock off the house. So, you know, we're probably not in a position where we're gonna put concrete and steel triple lock door there that they can't kick in, but one of the things that was brought up is maybe we need to have some security cameras down there. Now, again, we don't have money for that in any specific line item, but I thought we probably oughta have a discussion about that.
It's two buildings, I've got a picture of another building that I saw.
Have they broke into both of them or?
I don't know what was taken out of it. But.
So the.
Dropped the doors off. I found that Monday night, that was up behind the softball field, the backfield. And those were on last week.
Right, and that leads me to my concern of the copper sheets, the copper flashing that's just laying on the ground is very, very expensive. Did we pay for that?
I don't think we have yet.
We haven't yet.
Well, anybody who walked away with it, that's worth a fortune.
Well, at this, at this point, that would be on roof systems surveillance.
We didn't pay for it?
We haven't yet.
Well, it should be locked in here or the town wall, everything, materials for them.
So, the equipment that's stored belongs to Pirate Rec?
That is my understanding, Josh knows more about this than I do.
I mean, originally, when all the towns broke up, because every town, when I was a kid, had their own rent department. And then when Pirate Rec formed, because towns didn't have enough to make teams, basically, it was every town's equipment got donated to Pirate Rec to help get Pirate Rec going. So, I mean, in some way, that is the town's equipment. I'm sure the town's equipment is not there anymore, but that's what helped get it started, so.
But Pirate Rec is independent of the school system there.
Yes, they are independent, yep.
And there were, um.
There were five or three ones.
There were people that organized a fundraiser, not a fundraiser, but they had made a list and all, by the end of that night, all the equipment had been replaced.
Yeah, there was two very big donations from.
Which is, which shows that we've got some great citizens in these communities that should definitely be commended, but they also shouldn't have to take all the burdens.
Right.
And so the break-in last year wasn't even to have the gear, because the gear was found in the bond last year.
In the bond?
In the bond.
In the bond.
We also have some issues with drug use at that park, you're already told.
So, cost-wise, what does it, what does it cost for a, for a game camera, the cell phone style ones?
Those are pretty inexpensive, I believe.
Might as well find any of them, you got stuff there.
I could have bought one of them. But they're what, fifteen to thirty bucks a piece? I mean, uh.
Honey, right.
No, fifty to two a piece.
Then you need something to watch the film, right, and watch the footage on, it's very expensive.
You can send them the video, you can tell for just strictly for you. Send to your phone. As long as, as long as we can live with phones.
The problem with those, those are gonna get stolen.
But again, we'll put them properly and they get stolen. And if they're wearing masks, they're useless, if they're, you know, if they're grainy, it's useless. So you kinda.
So the only other option we've got to look at is where else can we put the gear and leave the doors open so there's nothing to break into? If we got a place in the town of Sangerville where we could store the gear that was accessible for Pirate Rec that's not gonna get broken into?
Well, any place can get broken into.
Right. I mean, as an example, they'd be less likely to break into the fire station and steal the Pirate Rec gear than they would be in a shed at the ball field.
It's because it's remote at night, right?
A lot of things happen out there.
You know, we could have you pick up a couple more of those shipping containers at.
Be a good use for a shipping container when we're done with it.
In all honesty, it would be.
Be a very good place.
Because you put a chain of a strong padlock through there, these.
They're not kicking the door in.
They're not kicking the door in and they're not gonna, they're not gonna have a set of bolt cutters rugged enough or be rugged enough with a set of bolt cutters to take a good quality chain of padlock off.
Can you pick up the container and put it in a truck? How big are they?
No.
Oh, oh, those, do that.
Oh, we're using them at the moment. Our town's records are stored in them.
And one of the things I, I told Miranda was that, you know, we want to address this problem, but we may not have budget to do much with it this year, especially not the next couple of months.
And that's why I'm asking if the, if the balance of the season, if there's a place we can put it to make this not happen again.
Well, I mean, baseball and softball's up, well, softball isn't, or baseball will be over in a few weeks.
Soccer coming up though.
Right.
They'll be starting soccer.
Yeah, and you know, all that soccer, it was, yeah, none of it was taken.
Just the baseball.
The baseball.
If you did that, wouldn't that be saying that the town.
It's a lock office.
Now we'll be responsible.
Yep.
Whereas you said before, the town really doesn't have any connection to it.
Well, we got a hundred and thirty-four students in our district, I feel like we have all sorts of connections.
Yeah, I, I guess that's a question that needs to be answered here, that's why we put it on the, put it on the agenda.
Problem is if we don't have a budget to take it out of.
Would the town be able to allow, say, like myself, to purchase a couple of high, you know, high-quality game cameras and try it for the few months that we have before making a decision?
Yeah, I mean, we can accept any gift, right?
One throw front, one throw back by the softball.
You've got, you've got access to some neat equipment that can get your, get those cameras up in the air where they're gonna be less likely to be messed with.
If you place them well enough, I mean, like Mike said, they're up here to, but it's worth trying and if they know that they're there, maybe they just leave it alone.
To me, it's a better, it's a better thing to give vehicles versus people coming in.
Alright, play.
But we have two separate problems there. We've got the drug needles on the beach and we've got.
Somebody told us they're also in the water.
Yes.
I did not realize they were in the water.
They are.
And where do you bring them? That's my question, the police department doesn't wanna have a place for them.
Uh, the recovery center has volunteered, the recovery center has volunteered to clean, clean up the beach and clean up the park this year for us. And they've gone and they've got all the equipment, they're supposed to, the training, the gloves, the disposal kits and have a place to dispose of it, so. Allen Burgess, his group, have got that really well handled and are doing it on a completely volunteer basis for us.
And that piece of it is the town's responsibility, though you can't have kids swimming on the town beach with drug needles in the sand. That is our responsibility. This year may or may not be our responsibility, but if we cure both problems in one move, then it's bonus.
I know there was a lot of people, Matt, talking about donations towards a camera system, I don't know.
If you guys would accept something like that, I'd be happy to order a couple, you know, and try it, see if it helps, you know, without having to commit any taxes to.
I, I guess the other thing, I kinda liked Mike's perspective on this because he chased these people for a living for many years.
I'd have to look at it to see what surveillance is, you know, what you got, you know, I mean, the object is, is put them where they can't see. Or they do, you know, you know, sometimes the higher, if they're too high, they don't get the pictures you need, if they're too low, they can grab them. So it's a matter of, every, every place is different. We've had, we've put them in bird cages before, it's been sold different. And whether or not they power or.
But presented as, as a gift, we've got nothing to lose, everything's a game.
Right. It's just kids more likely not coming in all hooded up and that type of thing.
I think it, because it got thrown into the pond, it won't, I mean, it sounds like it's just kids that are looking for something to do and they're nothing better than.
I remember said one of the times it broke in, they hit every baseball into the field and left everything there and walked back, like, they just went and hit all the balls in the field and broke the door and get it.
So at this point, we need to make a decision.
So did I give you a report this year or something?
That did, I believe they reported.
I believe that they, yeah.
I have not talked to God, but I heard God was the one who came out and investigated it. Children were.
So this is just a topic for discussion on our agenda at this point. Beyond that, we'd have to, if, if we're gonna make anything, we need to turn it to discussion and make a motion on it. So Matt, what, what you're saying was that an offer to do that?
Yeah, absolutely, if, if it's something that the board would entertain, I would gladly purchase a couple and gift them to the town and, you know, I can get a few people and get with Mike probably, if you don't mind, and just see where you think the best place to be, to be put and try it.
We might solve a couple of problems.
Well, if it gets a picture of the license plate, I mean, that's beneficial. Or if people hear that there's cameras there, that would be more beneficial, so they just leave it alone. Ideally, that's the best option.
Do you want to start the room up, simply?
A couple of cameras.
Keep it on the down low or it's spreading?
We wanna solve the problem.
That's it, whether somebody gets in trouble for it or not, the, the goal is to make it stop happening.
And the, from the town's perspective, the responsibility at the beach concerns me the most of all, but.
So absolutely, I mean, I don't think you guys need a motion until they purchase, but.
Yeah, it takes up the.
If I, yeah, if I, I just basically kinda wanna feel you out, if I go ahead and purchase them, if you guys would entertain, and then I can bring it to you at the next meeting, it would be accepted or denied, and you'll come.
My personal would have taken it.
Okay, so that's how we'll handle it. At this point, that's just discussion.
You guys are very generous, Matt, thank you.
Okay, moving on, town financials. And then we're gonna turn this over to Michelle at this point.
Okay, so, um, by not getting our tax bills out July first is really putting you in a very tough position. We have had money that is sitting in the account. We moved some of the money over to Amos Carrot, which you've got this look that shows you exactly our balances as of yesterday. We still have a hundred and, hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and fourteen that's still in hand nationally. The reason it's still there is because we are still getting payment from the state of Maine and you have to touch every single department to get them to change their funding to a different bank. So I'm struggling with trying to get those moved over.
So for those of you that are taking notes, the consistent theme here is the main state government is most of our problems.
Yes. So, um, also on this page, this one that's the big spreadsheet, I have taken just the basic bills for July, August, and September and run the figures for you with an estimated, um, income from last year. I use last year's income to kinda figure out what we were gonna be at. At the end of September, we're gonna be at a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars left in our checking account. So the problem with the school funding is that we need to wait to be able to commit taxes so that we know exactly what that payment's gonna be. Which, the school sent me a letter that's told us that we still have to continue to pay our school payment and we're gonna base that payment on last, the budget that did not pass. So our monthly payment's gonna be ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred, forty-seven oh two. Depending on how long it takes to pass that budget, affects obviously your checking account. But once the budget passes, they will prorate the payments for a fall. So, but it could be turned out again, we might have to wait till, how do we go for another budget meeting or budget pass?
We, not to interrupt.
No, go right ahead.
We talked about this at length this week. We're okay right now. What we wanna be is we wanna make sure that, that this group and the townspeople understand that if this budget process with the school doesn't get resolved, that two months from now, we're not, we're not presenting you with a whole account, we're out of money situation. We want, want you to understand what our options are here, so please.
Right, exactly. So, um, I knew a while ago, in other scenarios, that it takes like a month to get the tax anticipation note started with the bank. Well, we reached out to John and asked him, you know, like, what, what are we looking at? We now need to start it now to be ready for when we need it. He, there's two ways to do it, you can take a lump sum and then pay it back within the first thirteen months, or you can do it as needed, they will figure out how much. You'll have, actually, the lawyer's office that you want to use, Kristen Collins, would be involved with doing the tax anticipation note. And John is more than willing, you've got his email in your packet that he sent us. John is willing to come meet with the board and answer any questions that you might have. The problem with the tax bills is at town meeting, the town voted to do the two percent increase, two percent discount the month of July, but we're not issuing taxes. So we have to go back to a special town meeting to be able to move that discount to August, if that's when we get to move and do the discount.
And where the town voted that, we can't really just ignore it and have it go away. We have to, we have to address it in a legal order.
Which is a special town meeting.
Which is a special town meeting.
And then you have the scenario that usually what happens, you get your bill in July, you have August to pay it, and then September you start interest. Well, if we move the discount to August, at the end of the month, you're gonna hit them with interest. So do we want to move the interest to October first? Again, the vote of the town, we have to do a special time meeting. So depending completely on what the school does, we would have to have you sign a warrant in the next meeting so we could post it on the twenty-first and have a special time meeting on the twenty-eighth, which would be after they get done with the school budget. If it passes, we're good, because then we need all that information to produce your tax bill. We can't do it without those interest rates and things, because it's all created out of the bill. So I've been back and forth with Josh, we've played some scenarios, we've kinda messed around with the school budget, and I'm just not comfortable with saying, you know, this is where the mill rate's gonna be. There's too many variables to be messing around with that.
And I, and I agree with Michelle, because we've had that conversation together.
I, I think we just really should just wait so we know exactly what after using that date. So I guess at this point, we just need an okay for you guys to go ahead and talk to John, get him set up with a meeting for you so you can talk about the tax anticipation note and stop that, that process. So if we need it, we can. So if we need it, we can go into that.
And if we don't need it, there's not a cost to this.
There's no, there's no cost unless we use it, and again, if we do, the interest rate's pretty minimal, but John will explain that all to us ahead of time.
Right.
And John kinda recommended that we go with, uh, use it as needed, not the lump sum, because a lump sum is almost like throwing a bomb question out there.
So, yeah, so.
What is the total for the three months?
The total for bills?
Yeah.
Is gonna be, uh... Well, we can add them all together. You're gonna, you're gonna do it?
Three hundred thousand.
No, I did it by my.
We're also gonna have our page.
Yeah, I did it by my. Right. She, you know, she's gonna give you a total.
Down here?
And you're gonna come all the way, yeah, right across the board, add those, those three up, not the last one, not this one, that's not Adderall. That also doesn't include, it does include the paving, I did, I did have that figure, um, but the roofing, anything with engineering, we don't have any of those built, so I have no idea what those are gonna be.
Danielle, you had a question earlier.
So, just as a budget question. Would it be beneficial to take the figures from the first budget of the school board to go and base our budgetary off of? Because even if it comes in lower, the school does an adjustment to the tab.
It does, but your jack and mil rate on a figure that, um, for the residents, that might be, might not be true.
The difference of...
Your total is five hundred and fifty-four thousand two hundred and thirty-two and twenty cents.
Five fifty-four, two thirty-two?
Yeah.
And fifty cents.
So we haven't also...
When can we get that?
The hundred and twenty thousand that's there, that's your checking account, and I can obviously add money, the money will sweep in, sort of bottom, five twenty-two and no six. That money fluctuates in and out, so to cover as much as possible.
And then we've got a hundred and thirty in. Which we could pull and still keep our account open, because they're gonna put money in it.
Yeah. They want, as I had to go down and move a bunch of money from there, and they didn't realize that we need them. So she wants to know if she can present something to the board, and so we grind something up, and I'm removing the interest costs. So I can move them in.
The thing here is, Josh, we've probably got enough money to make sure we get all our bills paid and do all our business without going into this tax anticipation note. However, it's not something we can call off and get in twenty-four hours if we do need it. Right, this is, this is like a contingency safety insurance policy.
I'm more or less asking about the hundred and thirty that's not being, probably denied, and we can put it over here and make a lot more of it.
What's about a whole?
Like, I really think that it should be, maybe not, maybe we'll leave five thousand or ten thousand, but.
I don't, I, I mean, it's a decision.
Right. No, I, no, I get that, but. Because that's been done before, because we've had differences in the budget in the past.
Hmm, but you have all brand-new people that have learned how to do this.
Correct. But has that been explained to them? That, then it's just a...
Tonight's the first meeting that the school has ever helped out with the board.
So let's go back to Danielle. Bring us up to speed on what you're talking about.
So what we're discussing back here, back and forth, so the initial amount that they have figured in here is from the old budget that got declined, which is the one million, one hundred eighty-four dollars, nine hundred, nine and two cents. If we take that amount and go on and base our budget from that, if it got lowered, then there's a difference to the town, they offset the remainder of the payments for that.
So it reduces future payments.
Correct.
It does, but your, your mill rate is gonna be based on the hundred and...
But on fifty thousand dollars, what the difference is gonna be between this initial one and the new proposed one?
Half a mil, not quite half a mil.
Right.
Yeah, not that much.
It's not that much money. So, and when we did the budgetary process.
Well, this is, this is my, this is my concern, is that there are a lot of people in this town at half a mil in the property taxes, it's gonna be a significant amount of money there, and some of these people don't have a lot of money to spare.
I'm one of them.
No, I think we're all in that position, it does, you know, everybody's in that position, whether it be Sangerville or whomever, as far as that goes.
Everybody in the district.
But a budget is a budget, it's like you can plan on your budget of your CMP bill being two hundred, and it comes in a
Five.
A hundred and seventy-five, woo-hoo, you just gained twenty-five bucks, you know? But that's how you.
If you looked at CMP label, you're looking at a fantasy.
My bill's a hundred and twenty bucks a month.
Mine's five hundred and, um, yeah, a hundred and twenty bucks.
I, I, I think I would, I would agree with you on, I'm gonna call it guessing, estimating, um, when we get a little bit closer. If it got to the point where we were like, I guess it depend on what the interest rate's gonna be on this loan, and, you know, then, then that may play a factor in this, I, I.
Well, I guess my, my comment on this is being, is maybe for, say, next year, when we're doing our budgetary processes, that's the number we start with. Is the first initial one, that way their budget committee knows, they can figure the mill rate before, after.
I think they should lock in for three, three to five years.
Yeah, it sounds good, man, that makes sense.
What's that?
Lock in the school budget in three to five years. It would make it easier for us to figure out budget.
Well, I wish we could, as wages and everything else goes, but we, everybody does their budget yearly.
Yeah, I think you're breaking Joe.
Have you ever had more money before, have you ever had to do this before at the time?
I don't know, to tell you the truth. I believe that we have in Guilford, we have had to do it a couple times.
A couple of times, okay.
And then that's the other side of this conversation, um, you know, of course, if we're, uh, if we're estimating the mill rate and we're over versus setting up and borrowing money and paying interest, where do we end up?
Exactly.
You know, I... I follow what you're saying.
The other hard part about guessing is, is, I mean, Nicky said earlier, they got denied once and went lower, got denied again, and they went back to higher, back to where it was, but what if for some reason it goes above? That's another, I doubt it, that it would happen, but like.
This is kinda why we wanted to get this tax anticipation note processed, where we could use it, because what if this does drag out for three or four months?
And there's zero cost, a hundred percent zero cost unless we take advantage of using this loan.
Exactly.
No cost at all.
No, definitely not.
No application fees, no cost.
We could, we will clarify that with John, but to the best of our knowledge, yes.
If that's the case, then it's a no-brainer to have it set up, but I think we need to migrate towards not going in that direction, and...
Do you want me to try and set him up for your next meeting and the next July meeting? Not the ninth, because he's not...
Again, if there's zero cost, it makes sense to set it up and have a meeting with John and do that. If there's a cost to it, it doesn't make sense to me to...
Well, I think John will explain it at that meeting.
Right, and it doesn't make...
There's no cost to have John committed and explain it to us, there may be a cost to setting it up.
But I'm looking at, I'm looking at, if we anticipated and got tax bills out, and we're talking about a half a mil versus paying interest on a piece of money with, with the cost, it, it's one and the same, it's gonna, it's gonna be the same dollar amount. It doesn't make sense to pay interest.
It doesn't make sense to pay interest anytime if you can avoid it.
That's right, and...
Well, let's go ahead, let's go ahead and bring John in and listen to what he has to say.
Yeah, I don't think there's any harm in that.
Again, right now, we're okay, just the way things are.
Right.
But without committing taxes, we can't be okay forever.
So my question, at the district meeting on the fifteenth, can you change figures that the board is presenting to, like, to the public, public and vote and change those figures?
Yes, it's the only budgetary that can go and be increased during a warrant.
Okay.
If the townspeople came and said, "Look, we really want L for, L for our students and blah, 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 we wanna jack up the budget another hundred thousand, because L for L's ninety-six thousand and some change," so they can go make a motion to add that back in, and district budget meeting, they could go and pass it, and then it goes before the towns. And that's the other thing, like, this costs the towns money, because now we got another, but, school budget, without another referendum, now we got another special meeting. That's why I was saying maybe for next year, we should take the school budgetary amount, have that incorporated within our budget, so everybody knows, okay, as it stands right now, this is where our mill rate is at. If we go and we do A, B, C, and X, Y, and Z, this is where it's going. Because it affects us all. And by half a mil rate, I would rather have you guys give me a number and be a half a mil off than not now, and us being in this situation.
Anybody got anything else on this topic before we move on?
While we're on this topic, that, that hundred and thirty-five thousand, can we discuss that now?
Yeah.
Hundred and thirty-five.
The ten, Mid Highland?
Oh, yes, yeah, um, you mean, Gannon?
Gannon, yes. That, that's less interest, right?
Yes, a little over.
I feel we should roll the run of that over, if, if, as long as we're not using that checking account, we're only using it to accept money, we're not using it to spend money out.
That's right.
We, yeah, I think we could do that without any, with all of those, I think, administrative decisions, do that.
Okay.
And you're right, we should do that.
Sounds good, perfect.
Okay, so we'll move on, special town meeting schedule.
I basically just explained what that's going to be. Depending on, you know, we'll have to present you with a warrant for next meeting, and have it signed so we can post it and things in time for a special town meeting on the twenty-eighth.
And this is referring to extending the two percent discount, extending the...
And figuring out what you wanna do with the interest, do you wanna have it start again late September first, or do you wanna give the public a, a month, like you usually do, and then sign the trust on October?
I think we should give them a month, that's my personal thought. That's what we've always done, that's the right thing to do.
Yeah, we, you shouldn't penalize people because, you know, because of things beyond their control.
So the topic is special town meeting schedule, um, basically just notifying, it's on July twenty-four.
No, they need on the twenty-fourth, we'll have our meeting on the twenty-eighth, it'll be that Monday right after the meeting.
And then if that budget falls through, then we just don't have a special.
That's right, yeah, we'll just cancel, we'll cancel the special town meeting.
Okay, moving on, I am, he is signing the cemetery deed for Joyce Farley, and I think there was another deed that...
There is, we had a tax lien, um, the lawyer that was doing the closing in Newport, and she found a lien that had men discharged for tax lien, so.
And you've done the homework and it actually was paid.
Yeah, we don't...
So that's just a dis- discharge of a lien?
Yes.
Along with the cemetery deed?
Yes.
Michelle, this, this release lien requires a witness as we sign it, is that you? Or somebody else?
That would be us, we're both lawyers.
Well, pay attention, witness. Okay, moving on, uh, town manager's report.
I will be brief. Mill Street, we've already covered, Town Hall, remember, we're doing a special meeting here on the ninth? Gaboni's gonna be here, I've invited the Town Hall Committee to talk to the public, uh, I'm gonna...
What time is that meeting?
Six P M. right here. So.
Is that next Wednesday?
That's next Wednesday. Uh, and again, I've been trolling, trolling the internet for grants, and right now, there's nothing out that that main historic preservation site still has their same message that they haven't, uh, come up with, they haven't opened up, come up with the funds to administer yet. Uh, school board, after our last select board meeting, I sent you guys all a copy of that, the letter we sent to, that you get yours, it's in the, check, the letter's in the mail, that yellow. Uh, we sent a letter to every one of our, our school board members, essentially kinda covering somewhat what was talked about here tonight, is we wanna help you guys and we wanna work together, and we wanna improve communication, so. Uh, that has been done, you, you will see your letter in the mail, I think the mail was, what, yesterday, can I say? Thank you. P C E D C grant, we talked about last meeting, uh, based on the email thread between, uh, P C E D C, John, myself, and Ortanos, that letter intended has been submitted successfully, and we wish them the best. Uh, we had a trail meeting here, uh, Monday night, I was kinda surprised, we had fourteen people show up, uh, the Sangerville Knights ATV Club is working on getting themselves back active again. We had some people from all of the surrounding ATV clubs and main ATV here that were working to kinda help them, uh, kinda help them with what they needed to do to get their feet back underneath them, and basically from our perspective, it's helped get communication out about their organization, and I, you know, might help them write grants, that sort of stuff. Uh, but, you know, it's something I believe we wanna support, I think it will. And the gentleman from main ATV said, he said in Mill Lockett, he said, "By embracing, uh, the ATVs up there, it has made a difference in their business community." And everybody knows Mill Lockett's business community, it's been hard to reach over the last couple decades. So, uh, again, that was a successful meeting, very well, you know, well-attended, very positive, I think people were hanging out, I mean, we met from like six to seven-thirty, and then they were hanging out here, uh, talking till almost nine o'clock, I think, after, so. The other thing that kinda came up over the last two weeks, I, uh, was sitting at my desk one afternoon, I got an email from Kathy Conwell from Maine Municipal Association, congratulating us on... from Maine Municipal Association congratulating us on Sangerville being mentioned or being featured in an article in the National Civic Review. Somewhat prestigious publication, and it is "The Quiet Power of the Potluck." And Kelsey had posted the article on the town website for us. But basically, there's this group in, out of Cumberland, Carl Schatz is the guy's name. They have created an organization called Community Plate, and they're trying to revive the tradition of potluck suppers in small towns across Maine. And they partnered with Diana, the folks at the East Sangerville Grange, last, late last fall, and they had a supper, and, and Carl wrote about it and essentially raved about the East Sangerville Grange and the town of Sangerville in this, uh, in this article. And, uh, you know, there was a lot of good stuff in it. I encourage anybody to read the article. And I've actually since reached out, emailed, sent an email to Carl, and, uh, you know, kinda thanked him for there, you know, putting our town in a positive spotlight, and had a real good, real good email conversation with him. And they're trying to do some really good things. And again, you know, you kinda look, one of our strong, a very strong citizen we have in this community is Diane McCarthy-Clark. And once again, she's kinda been a senator, something that was very good for the community. Road commissioners report. Grading, uh, I've worked a lot with Eric Anderson over the last couple of weeks. We, they tried to do a little too much with the small grader, because the big one was, uh, in the, who was it? Ag whatever down there, Ag, John Deere dealership.
United.
United, and they had problems getting it back because parks were delayed and everything else. And I think it's kinda John's routine headache is what Eric, Eric had with his grader. One of the problem areas we had was the Brockway Mills Road. To help us out, they tried to get out there with a small grader. It didn't have enough meat on it to really cut the potholes out. Eric and I went back and looked at that together last week, and he decided that they would bring the big grader up and do it, redo it for us at no cost. Uh, so the grading, the grading is looking really good. This gentleman that he has is retired, one of the grader forums retired from Maine DOT. He seems to know his stuff. And Eric has been pretty straight with us. He said, "Look, if there's something we're doing the way you guys want it, something you want done differently, let us know." So they're proving really good to work with. Finally, met with Tom from ProSeal this morning. Uh, he came up. Uh, we went up and looked at both Maple Street and the line road together. Very positive meeting. Matt was there with me at the, representing the water, the utility district. And, you know, I, I got a pretty good feeling from the guy.
Did he give us shim heights for your...
He said he's gonna grind a couple of spots. He's gonna spot grind a little bit, so we're not, we're not using huge amounts of pavement to shim and then get into a situation where we have that much shim that we can't compact. It's just gonna turn into a pothole. So he, he's got kind of a plan. He talked with Cody, you know, we're, we're in a, in a good spot with him on that. And, uh, basically, they're waiting for the plant, for Pike to get the plant going in Dover. Because hot mix asphalt, you know, even the best truck, even the best hot top body you have, that stuff is still gonna cool over the road. And the hotter you can get it onto the surface, the better. So he's been talking with Pike. He said two to three weeks, they think they're gonna have that plant up and running, and then he'll give us a call and schedule, schedule the work then. And I did talk to him about going to eleven foot, we just did ten on the line road. So we're in good shape there. When we get ready to do the line, we're, we actually are gonna add a little more gravel into the line road. There are a couple of low spots there that the road committee and, and Josh and I have talked about. And, uh, we're probably gonna have that done over the next couple of weeks. And we're gonna have Hanson's come in and grade that floor, grade that right before ProSeal comes up the table. Uh, and the big thing we've been working on right now with the interim is kinda getting some more ditching and kinda general maintenance work done out on the boroughs. And that's pretty much what I have.
Any commentary on Brian's report? Okay, moving on. Select board concerns. You don't think I had, Brian? We've put the plowing, sand, the sand and plowing back out to bid. We've, we've got activity?
We've got a lot of activity, actually. Uh, I've talked with, I've talked directly, met directly with three people that are interested. One of them, what's his name, Herman, he's moving to Garland, the Patriot there. There's a contractor at Herman that is moving his operations to Garland. He feels he can, he can serve, serve our needs. He's planning to put a bid in. I asked him to be here at the, at the meeting on the sixteenth, so we could ask questions of him directly. Orman Gray is actually considering putting a package together and getting into the plowing business. And I believe he's gonna put a, put a bid in and be here on the sixteenth as well. And we've had two to three other people just come in and pick up packets.
We've not received any bids as of yet.
No, no, the bids aren't due until the fifteenth of July, so... But I'm pretty confident we're gonna see at least a couple of bids.
Okay, no other concerns?
Make a motion.
It's eight sixteen, and we have a motion to adjourn. Meeting adjourned.